We're very honored to have him here. He has demonstrated leadership throughout the state in his long, long career with the state. Cave Creek is maybe the town with the most challenge for water. We're 90% dependent on the Central Arizona Project, of which President Goddard heads that committee. And we're estimating right now, we're working with a number of a 25% cut. And which means that if the 25% cut, or it could be higher, does go into effect, then that's going to mean that we, number one, is promised water. We will not be able to meet the promised water. Number two is there is a likelihood, if it's cut is high enough, that even our deliveries to our own residents who are now getting water will be at risk. So we've been working on water conservation for many years, including restricted development many years ago, five years ago or so. The vice mayor to my, to my right, when she was first elected, did one of the things that you should all be grateful for, is she championed and got the council to approve water banking. And that year or so of water is what we're looking at to tide us over, because our government has run us up against the deadline. We can't build anything. End of next year is when the cuts are slated to be in here. And that water is going to see us through until we can figure out with the help of other people, because there is no water sitting around ready for somebody to pick up. So we've got a real challenge ahead of us. We've been, we've reactivated the utilities committee. We're having a meeting next week to focus on residential conservation. And we've, we're working with the golf courses, with Phoenix, with Surprise, with Peoria. We're reactivating our wells. We put in the interconnect project, which is going to be our lifeline to water from all over Central Arizona. We also restricted new meters. We do not, subdivisions have got to bring their own water. We limit the amount of water that new meters can use. That was done years ago. So we have been hard at work on water for a long, long time. We've got new purchases that we're looking at right now. And one thing I can promise you is that the water is going to be more expensive. And that's going to be Central Arizona, everything in Central Arizona, it's going to cost more money. I saw an article in the paper of the day that said in 2024, Gilbert raised water rates So we are looking for partners all over Central Arizona to work with us. We're reactivating wells. Unfortunately, the wells are in two aquifers that are dead or dying, a very, very small capacity. There's not the big aquifer that's down in Phoenix. We have these tiny little aquifers, because there's a mountain between us and Phoenix. And so we have a limited supply there. So Terry's visit is going to give everyone a feeling for what the challenge of the state is. It's, it's bigger than we can handle. It's at the national level, because it involves seven states. And we're looking for his leadership. And I just want to say before I read his bio and introduce him, that I think that CAP has done a magnificent job. They're a wonderful organization. And the further you get away from Cave Creek and the closer to Washington, the level, the type of job being done drops off dramatically. Running us up against the deadline like the 2026 expiration is political crime, in my view. So I'd like to introduce Terry. Terry Goddard was elected to his third full term on the Central Arizona Water Conservation District Board of Directors on November 7th, 2024, to represent Maricopa County until December 31st, 2030. Mr. Goddard also previously served as a member of the CAWCD board from 2001 to 2002. He is currently serving his third term as board president and previously served as board vice president. Terry is an attorney with Goddard Law Offices PLC. He served as mayor of Phoenix from 1984 to 1990, and as Arizona Attorney General from 2003 to 2011. Terry earned a BA from Harvard and a law degree from Arizona State University College of Law. Go Devils! Terry was born in Tucson, Arizona. And so I'd like you to join me in welcoming Terry for his comments.
Thank you, Mayor, for that too generous introduction. I greatly appreciate it. And I see my time here is three minutes, so I could sit down. I mean, you've just given 90% of my speech. I've got some PowerPoints, and I jump into them somewhat timorously, given what you've just said, Mayor, because you put it in stark perspective. We as a state, it's not just Cave Creek, we as a state are facing a very difficult water future. Regardless of what happens in the negotiations that are going on right now, we've got a much reduced supply coming from the Colorado River. And that's what I'm going to talk about here. And I apologize, because I think many of the council, many of your citizens already know much of this history. So I'm going to go pretty fast, because what I want to get to is sort of a wrap on what, Mayor, you just said, which is, we're facing in a very short time, the absolute imperative of Arizona leaders, Arizona citizens, to pull together, to have a unified voice. Colorado's been doing it to us for the last several years. And frankly, we haven't responded until recently, when our Director of Water Resources did a op-ed piece in the Denver Post. And you would have thought that he had just assaulted a nunnery or something. I mean, it was, it was, the reaction from the Upper Basin was volcanic. But what he said was exactly what has been happening, which is a failure to try to negotiate in good faith over the future of this river. So if I may, I'll take a quick shot here at the PowerPoint, but please forgive me. I think I'm going to go pretty rapidly through these slides.
You have a lot of time you need.
Well, let's be realistic. You've got a lot of presentations tonight. But I'll try to wrap it up, would we say, in 15, 20 minutes?
Take all the time you need.
Well, thank you. You're too generous. And I'd be happy, obviously, to add some questions. But let me start with trying to learn how to use the clicker. There we go. Here are the sources. I think you already know this, but Arizona gets about one-third of its water from the Colorado River, a renewable resource that started, I was mayor of Phoenix when the first deliveries appeared, in 1985. And the slogan then was, "The Lifeline is Online." And by that, they meant the CAP Canal Delivery System. And now I think the slogan is appropriately, "Preserve Our Lifeline." Because that, that single canal, and I'm still in awe of the engineering that brought it to us, has done more to elevate the Arizona economy than any other single factor, except perhaps the sun. It's, it's been an extraordinary change for all of the service area. And by that, I mean Maricopa, Pima, and Penala Counties. That's all we serve, but it's 80% of the state, and it's about 90% of the population. Here's where we get the water. And this needs to be emphasized. I've just got the one slide, but you look here and see the division of Upper and Lower Basin, but also where the Colorado River comes from. And it starts in Grand Lake, not too far from Denver, in the Rocky Mountains, and comes down through the Grand Canyon, through Arizona, and then ultimately to the Gulf of Bah, California. It's an amazing river. I'm looking forward to a float trip in a couple of weeks, because it is one of the scenic marvels, I think, of the world. You all know that. But it also is the water source primarily for 40 million people, 5 million acres of farmland, a burgeoning economy, and it has been used, and perhaps overused, to an extraordinary amount. It always bothered my father, and now I get to have the problem that the Columbia and the Willamette dump 100 million acre feet a year into the bay up in Oregon. The total volume of the Colorado is, in a good year, about 12 million acre feet. So we use our water really well here in the West. This goes through a little bit of the service area. I mentioned the 40 million people, the major cities, 30 tribes. Did I leave anything out? Well, the two lakes. And we'll talk a little more about Lake Powell and Lake Mead. But they are the largest reservoirs in the country, some of the largest in the world. And together, they have 60 million acre feet of storage. Now, we haven't seen that since the year 2000. It's been a tale of diminishing reservoirs in the past. Now, we are ruled, and I use that word fairly loosely, by something called the Colorado Compact, and more broadly, what's called the Law of the River. And somebody said, "The Law of the River is what seven states say it is." And that's pretty accurate. But back in 1922, a group of seven men, older men, as you can see in this picture, got together in Santa Fe and divided the river. And it took them a while. They were chaired by a guy who was then the Secretary of Commerce, Herbert Hoover. And they came to a conclusion, finally, at the end of 1922. And it was to divide the river into Upper and Lower Basin. That was really a brilliant lawyer named Doff Carpenter from Colorado, basically came up with the idea and ordered, because we were not able to figure out which state would get what out of the river. They were not real sure how much water was in the river in 1922. And what they did know was wrong. They had been using for their historical analogy, years which now we know were some of the highest flow years in the history of the Colorado River, running around 20 million acre feet. So they did, they thought they were very safe to say, "Well, the Upper Basin gets 7.5, Lower Basin gets 7.5, and we'll reserve something for Mexico," which ultimately became 1.5 additional. So they were counting on a flow, based on their calculations, of 16 million, 16 and a half million acre feet. Today, our reliable hydrology says we may be getting, in a good year, 12 million acre feet. But in more likely, in a, in a dry year, and we've had a bunch of them together here at the, in the 2020s, we're closer to 10 to 11 million acre feet. Well, obviously, that's a big change. Now, there's some reasons why it hasn't created a crisis before now. It certainly has created one now. And I'll go into those in just a minute. I'd be happy to take questions. But I'll skip through. The CAP does unite Arizona communities to an incredible degree. It's a piece of pipe that goes from the Colorado River, 336 miles to Tucson, just south of Tucson. It lifts the water 3,000 feet. So we're one of the biggest, if not the biggest, energy user in the state of Arizona. Because that pumping, that's a lot of water, that's a lot of weight. And the biggest, our secret weapon is Lake Pleasant. It's about halfway between Parker and Tucson. And it's a place where we can put water, when we can pump it cheaply, and then be able to draw it down in the times when it's so desperately needed in the summer. So that's, that's the secret. It causes Lake Pleasant, as you probably know, to go up sometimes as much as 30 feet, when it's got a lot of water in it. And then it goes down, and all the docks are unhinges, because they have to accommodate Our service area, I said, is the three, the three counties and 11 tribal entities. But I think more important than that, we are, through our contracts, and we're not a, we're not a retail provider, as you are, as most of the cities are. We're just a wholesale provider. We just try to get the water to you. But we try to get it to you reasonably and at a price that can be predicted easily. And about half today, and I'll go into the, why it's reduced in a minute, but about half of our deliveries are to cities and towns, to municipal water, and about half are to tribal entities. None of it is agriculture anymore. Ag, if it gets watered at all through Colorado River water, is through tribal contracts. So what I just said is on the screen now. So I'm ahead of myself. And we have to have horseshoe bands somewhere in any, any description of the Colorado River. So there it is. Please enjoy it. It's amazing. And we'll go on. Okay, the drought. There are a number of things causing our constraints on the Colorado. But one of them is that since the year 2000, when both lakes were full, we had 60 million acre feet of storage in that year. It has been a precipitous decline. And we've tried to catch up with it with planning documents, with allocations. We've always been at least one step, if not two or three, behind what Mother Nature was actually doing to us. But the reason is pretty clear. It's not raining as much, and it's not snowing as much, number one. The last time we had this long and extended period of drought was over 1,000 years ago. Now, how do I know that? I wasn't there. But I did, we have studied the tree rings. We do have some pretty sophisticated analyses of what happened. So 1,000 years, we call it the millennial drought, and it keeps going. This was a pretty bad year, as you probably know. We had one good year back in 2023, and the, all the other 20s have been awful. But the second part of it is, it's hotter. The forest is 2 to 3 degrees hotter than it used to be. And that means that it dries out. And you see it in the fires fires, but you also see it in the fact that when it does rain, or it does snow, much more of that water is caught in the ground, and it doesn't become runoff, and it doesn't end up in Lake Powell, which is where we measure it. So it's combination of things. We get a normal, and the years, I would like to see a normal year. In the years when we have normal rainfall and snowpack, the runoff in Lake Powell can be 60, sometimes 50% of what it used to be. So big changes in the Rockies, major changes in our watershed. And you can see there, the snowpack and the analysis for, this is a terrible slide, and I apologize for it. What it shows on the right is what's happened to us under a tier-one shortage. And as I'm sure you know, that's how we're operating right now, under a program that we, trying to catch up with a shortage on the river, we passed the drought contingency plan in 2019. We're operating under what they call the 2007 guidelines, which were passed surprisingly in 2007. And they were to try to analyze and to respond to shortages on the river. Obviously, what, Mayor, what you referred to is the crisis now, which is, the idea of the 2007 guidelines was they would last for 20 years. And the 20 years runs out at the end of 2026. So that's what we're up against. It's not new, it's not a big surprise. But the tier-one shortage, which were called for in the drought contingency plan, you can see right here, no excess water, that's the little blue dot up at the top, no agricultural water, that's the 500,000 acre feet that used to go to ag, some in Maricopa County, most in Penala County. That's complete gone, that economy is shot, unfortunately. And then small municipal and tribal reductions. That's at a tier-one. And Mayor, you referred to a number that I'm not sure I know about, but we are thinking that, in the long run, the tier-one may look good to us in the rearview mirror. And this shows you how it gets allocated. And I won't try to explain, that's not, it's supposed to be Lake Mead, that silly-looking beaker. And what it does show is, it's supposed to be full. So imagine that being full. That's when we actually got all the water we thought we were entitled to. Down here, you got the tier zero, tier one, and tier two. Tier one starts at 1078. It's the level above sea level of the, of Lake Mead. And those are the triggers that they've been using for allocating what kind of savings have to happen in the rest of the basin. There it is. And what this really hardly shows is what we call the bathtub ring, which is, if you look at Lake Mead today, I don't know if you've been there recently, but it really is sad, because you see this huge lime, lime deposit ring that goes down 30, 40 feet. It's now at one-third of capacity. And what we're worried about, and one of the other reasons why time is so critical, is that we're getting back, we were there in 2022, and now we're back at the point where they're worried about the infrastructure. They're worried about what happens to a generating plant when the head goes away. In other words, the water isn't high enough above the turbines to cause them to turn appropriately. There's something called cavitation, that I remember from the Navy, because it was a terrible thing when it was applied to a submarine's propeller. Cavitation also can blow up a power plant if it, if it gets out of control. So those are some of the things we're worried about. Okay, this is a good story. This is what Arizona has done in the last 10 years. And basically, the purple on the right is what we did, because we had to. That's the drought contingency plan that kicked in in 2020. The rest of it is all voluntary savings. And some of it was compensated, tribal savings was largely compensated. But that's water that Arizona put into Lake Mead that otherwise wouldn't have been there. And we've got a crisis today, I'm not de-minimizing that, but it would have been years ago if this hadn't happened. So I think we have, should, pat ourselves on the back for having done an extraordinary job of holding off the crisis. Now, here's what's happening now, and I think I've gone through it, so I'll skip most of this. Right now, in the last administration, they, they started the environmental impact statement process, so that they are getting ready to be able to put on the table a set of alternatives on managing the river. And those alternatives will be evaluated, the states will have a chance to weigh in on them, and the secretary eventually will pick one. He would prefer that it be one that all the states agree on. I think we all would. But right now, that doesn't look particularly good. The lower basin alternative, and the divisions right now are, as you know, I'm sure, California, Nevada, and Arizona, the lower basin, Colorado, Utah, Wyoming, and New Mexico, kind of a funny quirk of geology, geography, are the upper basin. I have a very hard time thinking New Mexico is higher than Arizona, but there it is. And that was decided in 1922, so that's what we're still living with. And maybe one of the things we have to do as we're dealing with this conundrum is, is blow up that distinction, because it really doesn't mean a great deal today. Except for the fact that that Colorado Compact that was signed in 1922 by all the states, actually, I got to correct that, it was signed by all the states in 1922, except Arizona, who signed it in 1944. We were slow to the table. And we thought, and there were leaders politically in Arizona that were convinced that we should get it all, that the entire Colorado River should be diverted at least ferry, and never get to California, that was the number one objective, and never get to Mexico. Obviously, that didn't, that didn't swing the day, but it kept us from signing the compact for over 20 years. So bottom line is, we've got a compact delivery, what we call the delivery obligation, which says that every 10 years, the Upper Basin has to release at least 75 million acre feet to the Lower Basin, 7.5 million per year. Excuse me, that's on a 10, 10-year running average. If I haven't spelled out enough crises, you know, you've got the drought, you've got the 2020 guidelines, 2027 guidelines being drafted, you've got the environmental impact statement that's now being put together, the alternatives are, are being put together. We are within months of having the Upper Basin be in default on the delivery obligations. Now, a lot of that depends on, well, it pretty much isn't any more precipitation in the Upper Basin right now, and so we may have that crisis next year. What do we do? Do we sue them for delivery? Should we sue them for delivery? Will that blow up all the other discussions? And maybe it's worthwhile to blow up the other discussions. So what we're looking at right now is this convergence in next year of a whole lot of things involving the Colorado River and your supply of water from the Colorado River. So there are going to be at least six alternatives, as you know, and EIS is a 1-0 action alternative. And there are a number of others. The Upper, the Lower Basin did a plan. We thought it was a very credible plan. And it basically said, "We know we'll have to have less." So we immediately took 1.5 million acres feet off the top from our 7.5, and said, "We're not going to claim that, because we know that's evaporation and system loss. And we'll take, we'll take that on the chin." But what we wanted was, in times of acute distress, and our, our modeling shows that the 1.5 that we're taking voluntarily would take 80% of the years in the future. But there's still 20% that worries us a lot, because those are ones where more cuts are going to be needed. And we asked the Upper Basin to step up and share with us the obligation in times in that 20% predicted lower years, and they absolutely have refused. They don't even want to talk about it. They say that, well, I'm not going to go in what they say, because I don't have time. But the bottom line is, we're getting nowhere. We've been in negotiations for two years. Arizona has been there, California's been there, Nevada. We've constantly put up other alternatives that might be workable, and the answer is always, "No, we're not going to go there." So let's talk a little about what we can do with a bad situation, because I'm not going to sugarcoat it. It is a bad situation. And Mayor, you've referred to a few of these. Augmentation, maybe. There are supplies out there. They have a price, and so that may not be the preferred alternative. Negotiating is where we are now. That's not doing us all any favors. The administration, by the way, hasn't weighed in yet. And they will have eventually a big say in what's in those alternatives. And that could be a drive to get the states back to the table. Because if it's unfavorable, for example, to the Upper Basin, then they would have some reason. Up until now, they haven't felt there was any reason for them to come to the table, because nobody in the federal government, in either administration, has said they're going to enforce the Colorado Compact. That's all we've asked them to do. Just say, "It's the Law of the River, you're the river master, you should enforce the compact." We thought it was really simple, but nobody has actually issued those magic words. If they would, and the jury is out with the current administration, it would be a powerful incentive to negotiate at the Upper Basin level. Conservation, you're doing. Right now, in Maricopa County, we're using per capita less water than we did in the 50s. That's amazing. That's a record, and one we should be very proud of and be talking about. Reuse, we're beginning to do a lot more recycling. We're doing, I should make it, I think, perhaps here in Cave Creek, you can ban the term "toilet to tap." Somehow, that's just not good publicity. But what we are talking about is getting the most out of every drop of water, and we're doing it. And we're taking some very strong and expensive efforts to do that. And recovery, of course, is what you referred to as a water bank. There's water underground, but we still don't have the infrastructure in place to get it back. That's going to be a big challenge in the next few years. Here are the mayors that have stepped up, including Mayor Morris, to be part of this protecting Arizona's lifeline. I feel like I've come full circle, having had the lifeline delivered to me in 1985, and now trying to protect it in 2025. But it's a great list, it's all the mayors of all the cities that get water from the Colorado River. So there are no, there are no stand, there are no non-participants. We're going to go next to the tribal communities, and I know they've already spoken very strongly in favor of a similar resolution. And then we're going to try, and the next step is the business community, who needs to wake up, because their future is at stake here, just like all of ours. And one of the questions came up this morning in a, in a discussion with three mayors on the, the Business Journal had a, the Cap Times, I'm sorry, has a regular thing that they allow CAP occasionally to sponsor. And so we did it on this program. I thought, we wrestled with one of the problems that has really confounded people, which is, how do you admit you've got a water problem? Because we know that there is media out there that would love to say Arizona, or some parts of Arizona, are running out of water. They do that whenever, whether we are or not. When 4% shortage over 100 years was declared in Western Maricopa County, The New York Times had banner, had front page story, saying that Arizona had admitted that it didn't have water. Well, that's not what we admitted at all. And I challenge New York or anybody else to show us their 100-year plan, because they don't have one. So we've done a good job. We need to celebrate that, and then we need to be together. This sort of goes through what I've just said, so I'll, it's a nice picture of the desert. We have been a water leader. I think we've got a lot good to say, and it makes me very angry that in this discussion, the Upper Basin say that, "Oh, Arizona's just wasting the water it gets. They're just a place of fountains." I'd like to shut off a certain fountain, but that's, that's not in my purview of, but, and golf courses. And they have, and not, Mayor, what you talked about, in terms of the amazing conservation efforts that we have, we have done in this state. I think we've got a proud story, we need to tell it, and frankly, we need to tell it to all our congressmen. They, they're all on our side, every one of them, we meet with every year. But they need to be more engaged. And frankly, I think the, the message of emergency that you gave at the beginning of this session is what they need to hear. So let's have everybody sign up for the Protect Arizona's Lifeline. You can do it online, not just cities, individuals can sign up. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. I think there might be a couple of questions from council. After, I think you wanted...
I did. So Terry, is there anything more that we can do?
I should tell you something about CAP. I don't think so.
It was a good education, which got me to this table, and I appreciate it very much, that we could do to expedite any decision-making in Washington. I understand the videos, I know that they have an impact. I used to produce a lot of them. But we need to do some face-to-face communication, too, I think. What would you say to that?
Yes. Yes. If you know anybody in Colorado, whatever they do, give them a call, ask them to stop being the really negative influence. And the whole upper basin has been in lockstep, because once somebody says, thank you, we're not going to, I'll take it with me, we're not going to negotiate a single drop of water, which is what they've taken. Becky Mitchell is the head of the Colorado negotiating team, that's what she said. No elected now wants to say, oh, we think we should be reasonable, because it sounds like they're backing down. So Colorado's got to, I think, pay attention and come to the table. And the only way that's going to happen, I think, is if this administration sternly tells them, this is the way it is, and we're going to impose a solution which is not going to be to your liking. There are a number of things that they have opposed, which frankly, I think are nonsense. For instance, the Bureau, the Department of Interior has a number of small reservoirs in Colorado, mostly. They oppose having the water from those reservoirs be moved within the system to keep Lake Powell from cratering. I'm sorry, it's all part of our joint water resource, and yet that's a position that they've taken over and over again. It's hard, I'm completely, I'm inarticulate most of the time, but on this subject, I just can't say. So talk to anybody that you know of influence, any of the council, the League of Cities, any of the groups that have other local elected officials, I think that's a powerful voice that ought to be spoken to. Be obnoxious, get in their face, talk about it, because we've not been, until Tom Brashatsky wrote that op-ed, Arizona, California, and Nevada have been the good guys. We've been trying to negotiate, we've gotten nowhere. So we've got very little time left, as your mayor said very convincingly.
One follow-up question on that. So the CAP retired general manager, Ted Cook, has been nominated to become the commissioner for the Bureau of Reclamation. We would all love to see him get that job, but it's on hold.
Let me be very clear, we would love to see Ted Cook as the head of the number-one responsible agency on the Colorado River, because he is the most professional, as you know, in this area. I don't think Ted is going to be a benefit to Arizona, but he's not going to be a detriment. He'll know what he's doing, but I think they put a political hold on him. He was scheduled for confirmation early this month, it got mysteriously pulled, I don't know what's happening, but he would be a great voice to have, because there are not many people right now at Interior who have the background that Ted has on water issues in the West and the Colorado River in particular. Unfortunately, I think other states, especially the upper basin, think that he would be an advocate for Arizona. You and I know that he wouldn't be, he would be an impartial judge as he was at CAP, but I'm afraid that's going to taint his nomination.
Thank you very much, thank you for being here, we really appreciate it.
You should push for Ted too, but not, he would help Arizona, because he's the best man for the job.
Yeah, absolutely, he's so well-qualified, and frankly, we do hope he helps Arizona, but that's off the record.
Councilmember Friedman.
Terry, when you went over the history, wasn't it true that the governor of Arizona back in the '30s was going to call the Navy out on California?
Well, those options are still on the table. Yes, was it Governor Moore? I think so. Mobilized what he called the Arizona Navy, and Gussey Bush was the Secretary of State, if I remember correctly, or the treasurer, I'm a little fuzzy about that, but they actually did have a small riverboat with a couple of highway patrolmen with guns, and they told the engineers on the California side that they couldn't go forward with Parker Dam. It was a lesson, I think, for all of us. The Arizona Navy had a very short tour, but frankly, I think we need to look at all of our options.
Thank you, Terry, and I appreciate you coming today, thank you.
It's been my pleasure, thank you.
Councilmember O'Quair.
I'd like you to respond to the following, that I think, to me, seems like double-dipping, and that is that we're leaving water in Lake Mead that otherwise we would put into the ground. So it looks like we're using less water because we're leaving that water in Lake Mead, which then becomes available to California. If we didn't, that water would probably be in storage in Arizona.
It's a very good point. One of the reasons that the upper basin hates us, and I use that word advisedly, but I think accurately, is that we can do underground storage and they cannot. They have a granite subsoil that basically doesn't allow for the kind of percolation that we have done in Arizona very creatively. And there is an issue here, we shouldn't ignore it. Normally, when you farm or when you use water, there is a return flow. But when it goes on the CAP to central Arizona, there's no return flow. And so you're absolutely right about if we target Lake Mead, and it isn't part of our intentionally created surplus, which we can do that too, then it's not our water anymore, it's part of the general conservation, and it could go to California or Mexico, anybody downstream of us.
I understand that water in Lake Mead is essentially owned, some of that water is owned by particular states, is that correct?
That is true, that's what we call intentionally created surplus. That's a different category. First, it's all the 512,000 acre feet that we have been forced to give up based upon the drought contingency plan, that's all for the general good. We didn't get paid for that, and we don't have any claim on it. However, there is another 10 or 12 million acre feet that has our name on it.
What I'm concerned about is that we're making Lake Mead look higher by not putting the water in storage in Arizona.
We have, but that's prevented a crisis on Lake Mead. I mean, it is, there's nothing in the water world that if you push on one side, it doesn't pop up on the other, and that's another one of those examples. And you just have to be very careful that you understand where the pop-up is. There always is one.
Isn't it true that we're losing groundwater in that area at a record pace right now?
Which area?
The water table's diminishing.
In which area?
Up by Lake Mead. I thought I read some ASU scientists said that we're starting to lose that water table, starting to.
I saw that article, I haven't read it yet, so I can't comment, I don't know.
Cynthia.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Goddard, thanks for being here. A question, how does CAP work cooperatively with SRP, other groundwater holders, for the good of water in Arizona as a whole? Can you describe how that relationship is?
Well, bear in mind, we are sort of cousin agencies to Salt River Project, they would never accept that termination, but you know, we're both reclamation agencies, we're both chartered by the federal government. They're a lot bigger than CAP because they have electricity and we don't, so we have a little bit of a chip on our shoulder. But the cooperation's been excellent, and of course, as you know, they are dealing only with Arizona surface water, and we are only Colorado River, so we don't intersect that way. There's something called SCAT, as you probably know, that is on the table for, and maybe I should close with this, because I think it is part of the hope for the future, it would interconnect the two canal systems. And that means, as often happens, if there's a surplus in the Salt River system, they could divert it into the CAP canal. Can't do that now. And what it does is, if you just think about those two systems as river systems, not as man-made, artificial environments, and the fact that CAP goes uphill, and very few rivers do that, it really is an extraordinary delivery system between those two systems. It's thousands of miles of canal, and there's virtually no place in central Arizona that you couldn't reach or get very close to, in one way or another, through that system when it gets interchanged. So it's not only a chance to share water between the two systems, it is a delivery option. And one of the things that you saw in the shower a minute ago was augmentation. And if we can find other sources, then it's very possible to deliver them through the Central Arizona Project Canal. We got Rome, we got lots of Rome, and so there are the possibility of, whether it's desalinization in the Gulf of Mexico, I'm sorry, the Gulf of California, or it's some other kind of water resource that we're able to find through WIFA or one of the other agencies, that's another transportation opportunity that, keep in the back of your mind, because it's an incredibly valuable public resource here in Arizona, that combination of canals. Sorry, I think, Mayor, I probably exhausted you and council and my time, so I'm very grateful for the chance to be here. Thank you for your awareness and your advocacy and your leadership, and all members of the council on this critical issue.
Well, we have a lot of confidence in Central Arizona Project. I think they've been a wonderful agency for the state. Being a native myself, when I left for my career, the canal wasn't here, and we used to, growing up in West Phoenix, you used to just let the water run in the yard to water all those green lawns. It's me, well, my father made me, but yeah, and mowed the lawn afterwards. But we have something for you, if you can stay just a moment and come up here to the podium.
Well, during my capacity as mayor, we've never done something like this, but Central Arizona Project has been so great, the staff has helped us so many times in our planning and all these efforts that we've got going on right now for what we're doing to take care of our little town. And appreciation to your coming here tonight and the wonderful job CAP's done, we're going to present you with something I've never done before, and that is the key to the city of Cave Creek.